Good evening. I'm Robert Floyd, Southampton Town Moderator. And this is something I initiated years ago. It's a Town Moderator Town Meeting Article Session. No votes, no debates. Essentially, I read the articles, sometimes with a little help from my friends, and you get a heads up of what to expect. Our town meeting is coming up, our special town meeting. It's coming up Tuesday, October 22nd, 7:00. The William E. Norris School. Could go three hours that night. It could go a second night. If it's continued, a third night. Chances are not, but that's in our bylaw. And if someone has an article and doesn't bring the information necessary to properly discuss the article, the audience can vote to continue the next evening. So again, our special town meeting warrant with summaries and motions. For the first time, I will read the summaries. I don't believe I've read them before, but they'll give you more information for you to think about over the weekend. I won't read the motions because they can change legally right up to the town meeting, even as a town meeting is progressing. But I will read the articles and the summaries.
Excuse me. Where were the summaries?
Repeat?
The summaries published?
The summaries will be available in your hand that you're holding now, so you can look at them as I go along. And they'll be part of what's handed out at a town meeting. So, "In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, hereby directed, notify, and warn the inhabitants of the precincts of the Town of Southampton, County of Hampshire, qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the cafeteria gymnasium William E. Norris School, 34 Palmeroy Meadow Road, Southampton, Mass., Tuesday, October 22nd at 7:00. Then and there to act on the following articles." The... We're broken down in sections. Part one, the bonded debt. Article one, replacement of the East Street Bridge. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $1,600,000 or any other amount to pay cost of replacing the East Street Bridge in the Town of Southampton, said funds to be used for construction, fees, and permits, engineering easements, or any other eligible and incidental costs associated with the construction of the new bridge and the demolition of the existing bridge, to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise provided or taking the other actions relative thereto. And the summary explains why we have seen this before. This article would allow the town to borrow under a debt exclusion that has been approved by the voters at a town election, $1,600,000 for the replacement of the East Street Bridge, which was built over 80 years ago. The total cost of the bridge replacement is estimated to be $2,600,000, but the town has obtained a Mass. Works grant for this purpose in the amount of $1 million. The borrowing of the $1,600,000 would allow us to leverage the $1 million grant from the state, which would mean that the town's taxpayers would not be paying for the whole cost of the bridge replacement. If the voters do not approve the $1,600,000 for borrowing, then the town would lose the grant funding, and at some point in the future, the town will have to replace the East Street Bridge at its full cost of $2,600,000 plus any inflation. This was originally passed-- this is where we've seen it again-- as Article 27 at the February 5th, 2019 special town meeting. But because the special town meeting vote occurred before the election ballot vote, and the time exceeded the 90-day statutory time limit, the town meeting vote needs to reoccur. Two-thirds majority vote is required, and the Finance Committee recommends. Article two. Rescind Article two of the July 26th, 2018 special town meeting to see if the town will vote to rescind the vote under Article two of the July 26th, 2018 Southampton special town meeting or take any other action relative thereto. And I'll read the summary. The article would rescind Article two of the July 26th, 2018 special town meeting, which was voted, approved by the voters at that meeting. There were two articles presented and voted to be approved at that meeting, which were related to the town's purchase of the 84.75-acre at 111 Glendale Road property under the town's statutory right of first refusal under Mass. General Law's Chapter 61, Section 8. A little typo there. The two articles as alternative funding were presented, and both were approved and authorized by the voters at that special town meeting, as the town did not know at the time of the special town meeting if we would receive a land grant of $400,000 to be utilized to purchase the property. Article one used $385,000 of community preservation funding plus the $400,000 land grant funding-- it was awarded to the town-- if it was awarded to the town-- for the acquisition of this property. Article two would have used the $385,000 of community preservation funding and then would allow borrowing of $400,000 in the case the town did not receive the land grant in the amount of $400,000-- I speak that way because there's brackets-- to acquire the property. The town did receive the $400,000 from the state for the land grant, so Article one was utilized to acquire the property, and Article two is not needed. Since both authorizations as approved are actual town appropriations of funds, the action to rescind Article two as an appropriation will remove the second appropriation, which is not needed or used, and allow it to be removed from our financial books and our Department of Revenue records as an official appropriation to be counted against our debt capacity. Simple majority, and the Finance Committee recommends. So we have part two. And again, these are simple procedural amalgamations of different articles for that one umbrella. Better than skipping around sometimes. Article three. Unpaid bills. To see if the town will vote to transfer $270 to the prior yield bills account for unpaid bills from fiscal 2018 for the reprogram of radios for the police department from Goose Town Communications, said some to be taken from operating stabilization or take any other action relative thereto. And I'll read the summary. This invoice for the work Goose Town Communications performed to reprogram portable radios for the police department was received after the fiscal year 2018 books were closed. And a nine-tenths majority is required. Since this is a special town meeting, if it was an annual meeting, four-fifths majority would be required. And the Finance Committee recommends. So we have a new part. Part three. Community Preservation Funding. Article four. Funding for Movable Scoreboard. And in the procedures that were introduced when I first started is to allow those who are the authors of an article to stand up rather than a select board reading them at their table. Nothing wrong with that, but it gives greater participation, and it kind of warms up the author to continue giving their opinions. And this is done especially for the community preservation articles. Funding for Movable Scoreboard, Article four. To see if the town will vote to transfer $6,000 from community preservation funds to the Southampton Youth Athletic Association for the purchase of a movable scoreboard to be used for the softball teams. Said funds to be transferred from community preservation surcharges undesignated account or take any other action relative thereto. The summary. This article would provide funds for the Southampton Youth Athletic Association to purchase a battery-powered movable scoreboard for primary use at the softball fields. It will be stored when not in use, and when not used for softball, could be used for other sports. Simple-- I was going to make a joke about pickleball, but I will not. Simple majority. Finance Committee recommends. We have another article. Article five. Hold on, the question?
Yeah. I asked you earlier. You've got a summary. You've got all kinds of detail. I've been trying to find this information after a week. I was given just the word.
The summaries were created today.
That's what I was looking for.
Did you take this when you came in?
No, I didn't see it.
Then what are you reading? I thought you were reading--
I went down--
That's what it is?
No, this is a warrant. It is not a summary.
The summary?
It's not a summary.
Okay. This is the revised one with the summary. I didn't know you were so prepared, and you brought your own warrant.
Well, I went down and got one.
All right.
Today.
Okay.
And to read up on it.
Thank you.
You've got all this information that I don't have.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Abby O'Tiverton, 16 North County Road.
Okay. And I understand that you are the author of this upcoming article.
Yes.
At the town meeting, I will ask the town, as I do anyone who is speaking for the first time, who is not a resident or who is not a voting resident because of age, and we vet. And it's a quick yay or nay. And then at the town meeting, you would proceed accordingly. But now, since this is a session, you're invited to read your Article five.
Article five. Funding for Playground Shade Shelter for Norris School. To see if the town will vote to transfer $16,000 from community preservation funds to the parent-teacher organization of the Norris School for purchase of a playground shade shelter for the pre-kindergarten playground area. Said funds to be transferred from community preservation surcharges undesignated account or take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you. I'll read the summary. I'll see you Tuesday night. Thank you. The summary, which has a little more opinion perhaps than the objective article. The summary. This article would approve funding which will allow for the purchase of two playground shade structures to be installed at the pre-kindergarten playground at the Norris Elementary School, creating a more comfortable play area for the smallest Norris School students. Simple majority is needed for this to pass, and the Finance Committee recommends. We have another part. Part four. General Bylaws. Article six. To amend the general town bylaw. Article seven. Restriction on issuance of local licenses or permits. This is a long one. Go get some popcorn. To see if the town will vote to change the town's bylaws, Article seven, Section one, by amending the existing language as noted below. Deleting existing language with a strike through and with adding new language as shown in bold-faced text, which reads as follows, or take any other action relative thereto. Article seven. Restriction on issuance of local licenses or permits. Mass. General Law's Chapter 40, Section 57. Brackets. Amended to add Section one. E. 10-20-15. The Attorney General's approval on January 22nd, 2016. Section one. The Town of Southampton may deny any application for or revoke or suspend a building permit or any local license or permit, including renewals and transfer issued by any board, officer, department, for any person, corporation, or business enterprise who has neglected or refused to pay any local taxes, fees, assessments, betterments, or any other municipal charges, including amounts assessed under the provisions of Section 21D or with respect to any activity, event, or other matter which is the subject of such license or permit and which activity, event, or matter is carried out or exercised or is to be carried out or exercised on or about real estate whose owner has neglected or refused to pay any local taxes, fees, assessments, betterments, or any other municipal charges. Such bylaw or shall provide that. A. The tax collector or other municipal official responsible for records or of all municipal taxes, assessments, betterments, and other municipal charges hereafter referred to as the tax collector shall annually-- and in bold-- and pay periodically-- furnish to each department, board, commission, or division hereafter referred to as the licensing authority that issues license or permits, including renewals and transfer, a list of any person, corporation, or business enterprise hereafter referred to as the party that has neglected or refused to pay any local taxes, fees, assessments, betterments, or other municipal charges-- strike through, strike out-- for not less than a 12-month period, continuing-- and that such party has not filed in good faith a pending application for an abatement of such tax or pending petition before the appellate tax board. B. Told you to get popcorn. The licensing authority may deny, revoke, or suspend any license or permit, including renewals and transfer of any party whose name appears on said list furnished to the licensing authority from the tax collector or with respect to any activity, event, or other matter which is the subject of such license or permit and which activity, event, or matter is carried out or exercised or is to be carried out or exercised on or about real estate owned by any party whose name appears on said list furnished to the licensing authority from the tax collector, provided. However, that written notice is given to the party and tax collector as required by applicable provisions of law, and the party is given a hearing to be held not early than 14 days after said notice. Said list shall be prima facie evidence for denial, revocation, or suspension of said license or permit to any party. The tax collector shall have the right to intervene in any hearing conducted with respect to such license denial, revocation, or suspension. Any findings made by the licensing authority with respect to such license denial, revocation, or suspension shall be made only for the purposes of such proceedings and shall not be relevant to or introduced in any other proceeding at law except for any appeal from such license denial, revocation, or suspension. Any license or permit denied, suspended, or revoked under this section shall not be reissued or renewed until the license authority receives a certificate issued by the tax collector that the party is in good standing with respect to any and all local taxes, fee assessments, betterments, or other municipal charges payable to the municipality as of date of issuance of said certificate. C. Any party shall be given an opportunity to enter into a payment agreement, thereby allowing the licensing authority to issue a certificate indicating said limitations to the license or permit, and the validity of said license shall be conditioned upon the satisfactory compliance with said agreement. Failure to comply with said agreement shall be grounds for the suspension or revocation of said license or permit, provided, however, that the holder be given notice and a hearing as required by applicable provisions of law. D. And this is where there's a change. The Board of Selectment is crossed out and in bold. Substituted Select Board may waive such denial, suspension, or revocation if it finds there is no direct or indirect business interest by the property owner, its officers or stockholders, if any, or members of his intermediate family as defined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 268A, Section one, in the business or activity conducted in or on said property. E. No demolition permit for a building which is in whole or in part 100 years or more old and/or listed on the Massachusetts Cultural Resource Inventory System for Southampton shall be issued without following the provisions of Article 37, the preservation of historically significant buildings. If a building is of an unknown age, it shall be assumed that the building is over 100 years old for the purposes of this bylaw. Section two. The bylaw shall not apply to the following licenses and permits: open burning, bicycle permits, sales of articles for travel purposes, children work permits, clubs, association suspensing, food or beverage licenses, dog licenses, fishing, hunting, trapping license, marriage licenses, and theatrical events or public exhibition permits. I will read the summary. This article would amend the general town bylaw, Article seven. Restriction on issuance of local licenses or permits, by adding in Section one, A. Allowing the tax collector to periodically, rather than just annually, furnish to each department, board, commission, or division of the town which issues license or permits a list of any person, corporation, or business enterprise that has neglected to pay any local taxes, fees, assessments, betterments, or other municipal charges, and removes the requirement that the town of delinquency shall be greater than a 12-month period. And in Section one, D. Change the title of Board of Selectment to Select Board. The Select Board has a policy that the time of delinquency to withhold denied licenses or permits shall be greater than a six-month period. Simple majority. Finance Committee recommends. I'm going to take a break and have some water. Any questions? I'll proceed. Article seven. Town bylaw. New article. Solid Waste Recycling Bylaw. To see if the town will vote to accept as in addition to the Southampton general bylaws the Solid Waste Recycling Bylaw as printed herein below or take any other action relative thereto. Solid Waste Recycling Bylaw. Section one. Authority. 111. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8H, the Board of Health-- the Board from now on-- of the Town of Southampton-- the Town from now on-- shall be charged with the promulgation and implementation of this bylaw and any regulation adopted under this bylaw. Section two. Purpose. 211. In order to protect the environment, promote recycling, and in compliance with Massachusetts mandated waste bans, the town hereby establishes mandatory separation of recyclable and compostable yard waste from the solid waste stream. Section three. Definitions. Recyclable or recyclable material means a material that has the potential to be recycled and which is presorted. Such materials shall include, but are not limited to: one, containers, films, and wraps made from metal, glass, plastic, or paper; and two, newspaper, office paper, cardboard, and other grades of paper. Recyclable or recyclable material means material that has-- there's a little repeat here. I'll keep reading. --and which is presorted. Recyclable material includes biodegradable paper but does not include organic materials that will be composted or converted or the construction and demolition waste unless it has been separated and kept separate into at least the following categories: asphalt, brick and concrete, ceiling tiles, wood, metals, plaster and wallboard, roofing materials, and carpet. Compostable yard waste means leaves, grass clippings, garden waste, weeds, prunings, and brush. Second. Section four. Plicability. 411. This applies to all owners, tenants, occupants, and property managers of residential, multifamily, commercial, industrial, municipal, and institutional structures and properties in the town and to any and all waste haulers duly licensed by the board. Section five. Waste haulers. 511. Every waste hauler must be duly licensed by the board on an annual basis to operate within the town. 521. Every waste hauler shall provide an integrated waste management service whereby collection of recyclables is provided to all trash collection customers. 531. Every waste hauler shall, upon request, provide the board with an updated customer list, which includes the names and addresses of customers within the town, the degree of service, and pickup schedule. Upon a request by the board, every waste hauler shall also provide education material to customers. 541. Waste haulers shall allow for unannounced inspections of collected refuse or recyclables by the board or its designated agents where the waste hauler is required to demonstrate satisfactory collection procedures. Section six. Penalties. 611. The following penalties apply to residents who are permitted to use the Town of Southampton Transfer Station. A. First offense: $25. B. Second offense: $50. C. Third offense: Permit suspension for the remainder of the fiscal year, July 1st to June 30th. Commercial trash haulers are subject to penalties as stated in Trash Hauler and Recycling Licensing and Operational Regulations. All penalties are enforced by the Southampton Board of Health or their designated agent. Section seven. Servability. 711. If any section of this bylaw is declared invalid or unenforceable for any reason, said decision shall not affect any other section of this bylaw, which shall remain in full force and effect or take any other action relative thereto. Section eight. Appeal. Any party cited for a violation of this bylaw may obtain review of such citation by filing a written notice of appeal with the Town of Southampton Board of Health within seven days, exclusive of Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays from the date of said citation. A hearing will be held within 60 days from the date of the filing of the appeal. Written notice of the hearing date will be delivered to the applicant at least two weeks prior to the scheduled date. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with the established procedures of the Board of Health. Following such hearing, the Board of Health may uphold, rescind, or modify any such citation. I will read the summary, which is very, very short. This Solid Waste Recycling Bylaw, if adopted by the town, would allow the town to be eligible to receive grant funding for the operation of the transfer station. Having a Solid Waste Recycling Bylaw has become one of the funding requirements to receive a state grant, which the town has used to offset some of the costs to run the town transfer station. Simple majority. And according to the Finance Committee-- and I hold here for a second or two-- it's not under purview. Before we get into part five, because I might forget when I'm all done and the buses come and pick everyone up. and pick everybody up in a room and take them home. We've worked hard through the years in having the most open town meeting, the most fair town meeting, recognized by other towns where I've been invited to speak on town meeting. I always get nervous when I do that. And rather than have an individual, the town moderator decide who can speak with someone's hand up or not, we ask everybody to come to a microphone. Fair, level playing field. Everyone's allowed twice at the mic, up to five minutes each time. I don't use a gavel to gavel anyone down. It needs to be within the scope of the article, of the motion of the article, but certainly there's some leeway to some play. No bullying, no disrespecting, no calling out names, no, you know, we use the third person, the previous speaker, not Cinderella said. That's not fair. I've seen it, it's not fair. And I take comments and I hashed them out. Whoever wants to listen, I give reports nearly every time to the Select Board, so we're in communication. It's teamwork, it's a separate form of government, it's the legislative branch. I do see people bristle when they hear me read at the beginning, this is not a town meeting, I'm sorry, this is not a Select Board meeting, it's not a Finance Committee meeting, it's not open time to the public. There are strict rules from the Commonwealth, there are strict rules according to town meeting time, the book for town moderators, and our procedures, our bylaws, and what we have deemed proper. It's an evolving process that's been going on for over two hundred years, and I'm thrilled to be your town moderator. Part five, told you I'd forget this at the end. Part five, administrative. Article eight, adopt clause of Mass General Law, chapter fifty-nine, section five, provisions, veterans exemptions reducing resident requirements. To see if the town will vote to accept the following clause of Mass General Law, chapter fifty-nine, section five, reducing the number of years of residency for veterans to qualify for certain tax exemptions from two years to one year, or take any other action relative thereto. Notwithstanding this section in any city or town which accepts this clause, the exemptions available pursuant to clauses twenty-second, twenty-second A, twenty-second B, twenty-second D, twenty-second D, twenty-second E, twenty-second F, may be granted to otherwise eligible persons who have resided in the Commonwealth for one year prior to the date of filing for exemptions pursuant to the applicable cause. I will read the summary. The local adaptation of this clause of the Massachusetts statutes would allow that veterans or their surviving spouses and families be eligible for certain allowed veteran tax exemptions upon having one full tax year of residency in the town of Southampton rather than two full tax years of residency requirement under the Massachusetts general statutes. The beneficiaries include some veterans, their spouses who won the domicile, and their surviving spouses, and some surviving parents and spouses of active duty military personnel who died during or due to military service. Under Mass General Law, chapter fifty-nine, section five, in short, the residency requirement is to have lived in Massachusetts for two consecutive years before the tax year begins. Reducing the residency requirement would allow the applicant to receive this benefit after having lived in Massachusetts for only one full tax year and not to have to wait the additional year. The quantity of veterans who move to Southampton from out of state and fall under one of the clauses to receive any of the seven levels of property tax exemption would be minimal if any each year. However, although the exemption could be as low as $400 for that one additional year, the positive impact it could be for that veteran, parent, or surviving spouse could be significant in the feeling of being welcomed with open arms as a Purple Heart community that Southampton is. Voting for this local option gives Southampton another tool to assist veterans and their families. Simple majority, Finance Committee recommends. And again, I broke a precedent by reading the summaries. They have the opinions of the town government, of our executive branch. However, I felt that would educate us better since some of the articles were kind of short. We're all good? See everybody Tuesday, seven o'clock, William E. Norris School, rain or shine. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Cheers, thank you.